I'm sorry.
Meeting of the City Council of Coldwater, Michigan to order, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Coldwater City Council will be in person for all council persons except for Councilman Richmond, who will attend by telephone or video conferencing due to current military duty. So if the clerk would please take the roll now.
Okay, I'm Councilmember Richmond, attending via phone. Councilmember.
Yes, I'm here, Fort McCoy, Wisconsin.
Councilmember Mackin.
President.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Knott.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Here.
Councilmember Petzko.
Here.
Councilmember Hazel Baker.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
I'm here. Everyone is here, we have a spot on our agenda now, and we have one at the end of the meeting for public comments, so if anyone would like to address the council, maybe do so now or at the end of the meeting. Mr. Granger?
Good afternoon. I'd like to take this time to introduce Joe Thornburg. He's the new Deputy Director. Joe comes from the city of Farmington Hills. He was a construction inspector, too, for them, and are delighted to having him and his wife Lindsay, originally from Brunson, are relocating back here with her two daughters, and I'll introduce you to Joe.
About pretty much now and there. My wife's from the area. We've thought of fitting to move back to roots. Come from a background of construction, engineering, education, of that nature. I was fortunate to work for Farmington Hills, who is very active in infrastructure, and I've learned a lot through them, and wanting to bring that to Coldwater.
Welcome. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into our consent agenda. These are items we consider to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless someone in the audience or someone up here wishes an item removed for clarification or discussion. Tonight on our consent agenda, we've got our minutes of April 24th, DDA minutes of March 22nd, our library advisory minutes of March 6th, a joint meeting of the Council of DDA and Planning Commission minutes of April 17th, our REC Board minutes of February 7th, our BPU minutes of April 5th, South Central Power Agency minutes of March 2nd, our BPU financial reports for statements for March of 2023, and the city's financial reports for 2023 for March of 2023. And finally, a letter from Keith Baker regarding the 2023 Memorial Day events and proposed temporary closure of US 12 on May 29th. Those are the items on our consent agenda. Would anyone in the audience like something removed for further clarification? Anybody up here? Yes.
I was just concerned about, I was, I heard on the radio about Keith Baker bringing up a property being bought by realtors and then having so many people in the renting places. Were you gonna bring that up tonight?
Yes, as part of my manager's report.
Okay, yeah, because we're one of the, we have one of the homes next to us that's being rented out, and we've talked with Thompsons, and we had some issues, and we just kind of want to know what's going on, what, we'd like a list of what, you know, renting issues there, you know, because there's been quite a few, and Thompson won't communicate with us anymore, and so we just had some issues that we wanted to.
You'll bring it up on his.
See what's going on, you know, so, because it's right next door to us again, you know, we had problems in the past with other things, and, you know, they're down, they're down to, I think, five or six people right now, but at first there were like 10 people living there, and they were, they told us they were sleeping in the basement, there's no egress window, just other issues. We had to contact somebody about the lawn, you know, because my husband's willing to mow the lawn if they want to pay him, but we went to Thompson, he said it wasn't his responsibility, you know, just issues like that. We had problems with noise. They have company coming over, a lot of times drinking, 2:00 in the morning, this was at first, but we haven't had that issue in the last, after we kind of set them straight, you know, but we're constantly having to, we can't communicate with them because they don't speak English, so, but just issues like that, we were just kind of concerned what was going on, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else in the audience like to comment anything on the consent agenda? If not, would anyone in the council like to bring up anything on their consent agenda? If not, we would look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Chad, and I think, I don't know who it was, Randall? All right, we have motion and support to approve our consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That is approved. Next, we have a public hearing, memo from Samantha Albright regarding an application for obsolete property rehabilitation act, it'd be a tax exemption certificate for Coldwater Executive Suites, 32 Tibbetts Plaza, and 50 West Pearl. What we'll do is open the public hearing, we'll hear from staff, we'll take public comments if there are any, and then we'll close the public hearing and bring the matter up to council for decision. So, we'll open the public hearing. Samantha, you're on stage.
Yes, good evening, everybody. So I know the last meeting I introduced the application we received for this property, so just to go over a few basic points, Coldwater Executive Suites owns the property. We are, they're requesting eight years for the total certificate period, which is based on their investment of just over $250,000. Between, they'll have a total of 46 employees retained between the people that will be occupying the building, as well as construction workers that'll be hired to complete the project over the next year. 50 West Pearl will be done first, as of July 1st of this summer, and 32 Tibbetts will be next July, so by the end of next summer, the whole building will be completely renovated. So I don't know if you guys had any questions as far as any improvements that will be made on the building. Like I said, there was significant water damage, so they've had to replace everything from the ceiling to the floor, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, all that was outdated, so all that will be updated. I know because of the water damage, the roof has all been repaired already, and all the ADA compliance that they need to meet will be updated as well throughout that process.
That's a good summary, Samantha. We'll see if there's any public comments, and then we'll close the public hearing. If council have questions for you, you can answer them. Would any public like to comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring the discussion up to council level. Does council have any questions for Samantha? If not, our action would be either to adopt or not adopt Resolution 2336.
Motion to adopt Resolution 23.
Thanks, Chad.
This minus is 29.
2336, yep. Thank you, Chad.
Support.
Support, John? We have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Samantha. Number 12, Bills and Accounts are asking us to approve 279, $837. Tom is hiding out there. Keith is here. Any questions on the bills?
Move to pay the bills.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Michael. We have motion and support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Bills are paid.
I can't hear Emily, she's holding.
Give a little bit of a pause.
Yeah, I'll give a pause for, Emily, I forgot about you, sorry. You still with us, Emily?
Yeah, no worries. Yes on everything so far.
Okay, I'll try to slow down. Number 13, City Manager Report. Keith?
Thank you, Senator. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of project updates. The first of which is our, this year's sidewalk project is now complete. A number of locations on US 12 East and West Chicago and side streets down Walnut, West Pearl, and elsewhere have been completed. The BPU is doing lead water line replacement. Their first attempt at that was down on the south side of town on Sherman, and they'll be moving north as well at their next location. And I'm sure everyone's been affected if you've tried to go west out of town to the US 12 Bridge renovation project that MDOT is underway between Western and River Road. Then lastly, we have broken ground on the downtown restroom construction as well, and we hope to have that done in the next couple of months. One thing that I did want to bring up that I made you aware of last week, and in the manager's report publicly, is that we've had a number of homes that have been built and are being utilized for persons that are overoccupying those properties. Not that they can't be rental properties, but it's how many they're putting in them, and whether or not they're getting registered and inspected. And so, I wanted to make that issue public within the hopes of discouraging that practice. We have sought enforcement action against a number of them already, and we know of a couple others. We also hear as though there might be a few out in the county or some of the adjacent communities. We realize that there's a housing shortage and a housing crunch, but this is not a way in which to address that by overoccupying, putting too many people in a small space. And the two examples that I used were, we know one home which has been resolved, had six people in a two-bedroom, so it was, it would have been licensed or is licensed for four, but more extreme case was, we've counted at least 13 in a three-bedroom home, and am sought enforcement action against that one. We're seeing that with a couple particular property owners, and kind of the process that's occurring here is, someone will buy the property, then they'll lease it to a company or a third party, and then that third party will then be the manager of employees for that company in renting to individual persons, and charging those individual persons a fee, and when you multiply that fee by 10 or 15, it gets pretty high. So, we're looking at, City Attorney and I, and our Neighborhood Services Director are looking at amending our ordinances to put in some greater enforcement options, and doing a lot of research with what other communities are doing relative to these type of things. You see this in communities that have shorting, housing shortages, particularly in university communities, tourist towns are facing this as well, and a different, the same problem, just a different marketer aspect. One of the telltale signs is you can see vans of people coming and going. Some of the homes may not look like they're being rented to numerous people, but there is a van that's shuttling those people from the property back and forth to their place of employment, or we know of one that essentially has a backyard full of cars, because those people do have vehicles and are, all of a sudden, multiple cars show up and they have difficulty parking those, and that's a telltale sign. So, nothing for you at this point, just to let you know that we're aware of it, to have the community notify us if they're living near one, that we can pursue investigation on, and to hopefully discourage it going forward.
What's the current enforcement process, and other fines? I mean, how does that work?
Yes and yes. So, if we're notified of a potential violation, we would send a notice if they haven't already been registered, and seek to conduct an inspection. If it fails, they get a notice, or they get a ticket, and they have to pay that within a certain amount of time, and correct the violation, and if they don't, then they can, we can take them to court. We've only had one go to court so far, but it's hard to verify if they are, if they're trying to be elusive, then it's hard to verify how many, and there's language barriers as well. But, but yes, there is a, an escalating process, if they're not registered, to get them registered and inspected, and then, if they're in violation, then pursuing enforcement on the violation.
How much is the fine?
I don't have it off the top of my head, so. And ultimately, if they make, if they made the correction, then they're not going to be, it won't be a financial penalty, it'll, once, if they correct it within a certain amount of time, then there won't be a financial penalty.
Is it a ticket of meaningful amount, or is it just a?
It's a, I want to say it's a civil infraction. I'll have either one of my staff here to help me out, but I can report back with that.
Is that what you're looking at, when you said you're looking at greater enforcement options? You're looking at higher fines, or?
Right, we want to put more teeth in it.
Right.
That's, and City Attorney is on vacation the next couple of weeks, but that's one of the things that we've found in trying to pursue this, is to be more persuasive on discouraging it, that we'll have, we'll look to put some more teeth in it as well.
And my understanding, you're talking about, they're getting shuttled back and forth to work, and I don't know if I heard you say employers, but is this something where companies are doing this to house their people?
We don't think that our local companies are doing it. We think companies that they hire for services are doing it, but we haven't, we haven't confirmed that.
So you're saying like, factory ABC over here is finding somebody to do this, just not in their own town, and then shuttling them back and forth out of Coldwater?
They're hiring me, and I'm telling you, telling you I can get 100 employees, because I can house them. It's all, and.
Right, I don't want to.
Right.
Inappropriately throw anyone under the bus, per se, to, without, without evidence, but, but yeah, if I hire a company to do work, a service to do work at my company, they're, they're providing the employees, and they're housing the employees and bringing them to my site.
I mean, that almost sounds like human trafficking.
Well.
I mean, in a very.
I don't know the legal definition of, but.
Labor trafficking?
Right.
Well, when you're keeping them and working them and forcing them into a situation.
That's why I wanted, it's relatively unique to have this discussion at this level, but it's something that we want to get ahead of, and we've heard some complaints about it already, and we know of a few, but we think there are a few more out there, based on some of the homes that have sold, and who's buying them, and what they're using them for.
Well, and we're at a little bit of a pivotal time with our population growth, and all the apartments coming in, and the housing, and the housing issues, and, and, yeah, so thank you for getting on this and looking to get ahead of it a little bit, because I don't think it's going to get less.
Definitely more to come.
Yeah. You might want to just touch on the timeframe, because even if we get on an issue quickly, there's also court times and service and time to respond. I mean, this, I did want people to know, no matter how proactive we are, there are legal systems.
There's due process, and it takes weeks and months.
Unfortunately, yes.
If somebody were to, if somebody were to protest or be elusive, or attempt to not comply, then yeah, they could drag it out for quite some time.
I'm sure Megan knows this, but if you're getting 10 people, you're getting $500 a month for, you know, $100 fine, or a $500 fine is not even gonna, so I'm sure that's going to be the challenge. How do you make it, Randall?
I thought in the past, it depended if there was different shifts, like six people in a two-bedroom house, two on first shift, two on second shift, and two on third shift. They never lived there at any given time at the same time.
Goes by, I believe it goes by your residency, so it's basically, it's your mailing address.
Right, for us, that would still mean, I know that some of those situations occurred back in the 80s and 90s, when I was here the first time, but it goes to total occupancy as far as the.
Okay.
Just because they can turn them over in the course of a day doesn't, doesn't elude that.
How do you legally do that? There could be a family that have five kids or six kids living, running a three-bedroom house. We would not be, I mean, how legally do they?
Therein lies some of the difficulty of what the, and we have, we have some very large, multi-generational families, which, which are, which are fine, but it's, it's whether or not then they're, you know, have they claimed homestead exemption?
And renting it, oh, you're not, they're renting it.
If they're renting it out at all, it should be, regardless of how many people are in there, if it's rental, if it's being rented, then it should be registered and inspected, so.
Tough issue.
So it's, there's not an easy answer, but it's something that we're, it's now a community issue, and we want to, we'll continue to work on it.
Okay. More good news, the fire pit.
So, there have been a little bit of, yes, for as nice as having a downtown fire pit is, it has been abused a little bit, and so we just ask people to, we're taking efforts to, we'll add a cigarette receptacle, we're adding signage, which has been ordered, the staff, the DMS staff have reinforced the activation button, and we're learning from our mistakes, and we're going to kind of relocate the timer and hopefully make it easier to operate. So we just asked that, you know, use it, but use it appropriately. We want it to be an amenity downtown, so. Moving on to a couple other events coming up, Memorial Day observances. I just want to thank Joe Renshaw, he's kind of taken over from Jerry Ford on the organization of the community's annual Memorial Day ceremonies. Those are scheduled, as you just took action on in the consent agenda, on Monday, May 29th. The same schedule of events, we have a ceremony downtown, a parade, observances at the bridge, that's to be determined based on the condition of the bridge at the time later this month, but the bridge may be foregone, and just go straight to the old cemetery on the north side, and then the, then the primary service at 10:30 on the south side. Couple new sponsors for this year's event that are helping offset the costs of the event include Coldwater Township Sunrise Rotary and the Branch County Community Foundation, and just a recognition for Jerry Ford for all of his organizational efforts over the many years for putting on the ceremonies. Then secondly, Strawberry Fest is just over a month away, so Saturday, June 17th, from 9:00 to 3:00. Registrations are still available. Obviously, we take them up until the day of. Registrations are still available. Obviously, we take them up until the day of, but we really, it does really help for those vendors to get their registrations in as soon as possible, so we can accommodate them and get them located in spots downtown. And then downtown spring maintenance, we've already gone through some of this, but there have been volunteer efforts to clean up downtown. The city's contractor has been through the parking lot landscaping. We have a contractor that will be coming through this summer. All of the parking lots will get restripped. A couple of parking lots will have some patching and seal coating. So that's yet to come. And we just asked the downtown property owners, take a look at their buildings and properties and windows and awnings and, and just, you know, help us out as we're trying to maintain downtown and make sure it's a place that people wanna come this summer. And lastly, I got some promotions at the Co-Water Police Department. We wanna recognize Officer Regan and Officer Gunnaman for their promotions to sergeant. And you've heard the information. I know it's been covered on social media and WTVB. I wanna recognize them for their promotions from officer to sergeant with the City of Co-Water Police Department. Congratulations to them. That's my report.
Thanks Keith. Any questions on any of the other topics for Keith? Not a motion to approve a city manager report would be nice.
Motion.
Thanks Jim.
Support.
Thanks Travis. We have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm waiting Emily.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number 14 of the memo from Meyer Paul, our utility director regarding water and wastewater rate adjustments. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am here to ask for an increase in the water and the wastewater rates. 3.9% on the water side and 2.9 on the wastewater side effective July 1st. I'd like to do is go a little bit over of why these rates are necessary. So in, on page two of the water report, Sean, if you can bring that up. Keep, keep, keep going after the, after those there. Keep going. So back, back at the end of last year, we had asked Utility Financial Services to do a cost of service and projection for us, financial projection, just to make sure to find out exactly where the utility is on the water wastewater side, on electric and the telecom side will be getting those probably in a month or two. But on the water wastewater side, we went ahead and went through this and there's a couple of interesting things I would like to show you. So on page two of that report, you'll see in there that our operating cash balances. Keep going. It's in the report. There you go. On page two of that report there. Keep going. Actually, I think you might've gone, there you go, there you go. Keep going. So what, what we're showing right here on the water side is we wanna try to maintain a, a cash balance of $2.3 million. That is to make sure that we have enough money in, in reserves to be able to pay bills and handle anything that catastrophically happens either at the plant or out in the system. Currently, we're sitting at about $1.5 million and without any rate increases with current projections for everything, we're looking at a negative balance in 2028, which is something that we really don't wanna have, especially considering that we're looking at the possibility of doing some major capital improvements in 2027. So our rate consultant, if you go to page six, has projected a 2.9 or 3.9% on the water side. And in that, it, it really keeps the same cash balance about $2.3 million, but it shows in there, keep going. Right there. Nope, keep going. There you go, right there. As you can see, with the 3.9% increase, we are not at that 2.3 level. However, we are showing a good cash fund balance of roughly one point, anywhere from 1.7 to 1.2 million dollars. That 1.5 million in there is for potential expansion, but that's all based on customer needs up on the north side. That is active cost right now of a new water tower. As we all know, by the time we get ready to put in a new water tower, you can probably add another half a million dollars to that, but we'll continue to look at those projections. The other thing in these two charts, if you look at, is our debt ratio, our debt coverage ratio. We wanna try to maintain a 1.45 a ratio on that. On the water side, we're very good because we don't have a whole lot of debt and you'll see a little difference in that on the wastewater side. But if we approve the 3.9% right now, we're looking fairly good financially from a cash balance standpoint to be able to handle our large capital improvements that we're planning on over the next three to four years, as well as maintain a good balance for anything catastrophic that fails or if we have to do any major rework at the plant itself. I'll take a pause right there to ask you if you have any questions on the water side and then we'll get into the wastewater side. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the wastewater side. If you can bring up page two of the wastewater.
Oh, I got a question. Why, what would necessitate a water tower? I mean, we, we have one up on Willowbrook on the northeast side of town. I mean, how realistic is that 1.5 million for a while? What would be the purpose and where would it go?
Load growth. If we, if we saw some major increases to, to what, usage out north? If, at one point, we talked about the expansion of Clemmons or the sale of some additional property out there that Clemmons owns and some of those potential economic development were high water usages. So we wanted to make sure that we had plenty of water capacity in the system. And that's all served up the high pressure side, so the more we can store up there, the better it is for those high-pressure pumps.
Okay. Would there be a way, if, because we're talking about doing, we're talking about raising residential rates for commercial, potential commercial, I mean, I know it's mixed, but is there a way when those developments come in to incorporate the cost of a needed water tower to get on our system to them?
It is potential. We can look at that. We can also look at state grants for infrastructure improvements as well. I know that's a lot that's being talked about nowadays as, as these larger industrial customers are coming in, applying for and getting state and federal grants to be able to run some of that infrastructure to offset some of those costs. And as we do cost of service studies, they look at what the impact is for each of the different rate classes. So if we see a large increase of usage on a commercial customer or industrial customer, you may see that your residential rates will maintain constant, but your commercial rates will go up based on the flow. The biggest thing you wanna make sure you do is you don't have subsidizing from one rate class to the other rate class.
Right.
But that is something that we can, we will look at as well too. If, if we get another customer that necessitates an increase in this, that we would look at ways to offset those costs.
How much do you see water towers were?
This one, what they anticipate is 1.5 million.
Oh, where would it go?
I believe they talked about it up where Newton Road, Jonesville Road, I know we've owned, we own some property on Newton Road. I believe that's the area that they were talking about putting the water tower.
I think the plan was with, with the substation that it would be up in that corner as well, so.
We park a fire truck on a hill and use that as a.
If, if that goes to the general fund budget, we may have to look at that.
And to council member Canucks, if I may, Paul, comment. So for example, example of what you're suggesting is that the taxes that are generated on the Clemmons project do go, that are collected, do go back to paying for the infrastructure costs for the bond that it took to serve them. So for the physical infrastructure, there's an L D F A that's capturing those funds that then go back to pay for.
And that's why, the reason for my question was, if we're gonna raise rates on our, on our residential people to need to put in a commercial item that historically is gonna be paid for by infrastructure, well, but grants and such, that we, why are we raising the rate?
Well, and just historically, it was brought to council many years ago to do a fee, a development fee to help offset this and new developments. And we, a long time ago, elected not to do that. We didn't want to discourage new development, but it was suggested us many years ago, I don't know if Randall remembers this or Mike, that we could put an additional assessment fee onto new projects and that would help, they would then pay for when infrastructure is needed and we, in wisdom or not, elected, we didn't wanna slow down growth and progress. So we may not be in this kind of discussion if we had acted differently 20 years ago, if that makes any sense. But I think Paul knows what I'm talking about, is a develop, development fee or something that can be assessed.
Yeah, a, a lot of utilities or a lot of cities will charge larger fees for that and they call it impact fees, economic impact fees. And those impact fees go to pay for some of the infrastructure that's already been in place. So for instance, if you have to increase a plant or as, as a customer's already paying their fees or paying for that plant, these impact fees would help to pay for the capacity in those plants that they would actually be using because those plants are already being paid by others. So the, the thought process is, is those impact fees would offset the cost that everyone else would see for this customer coming in as, as either a non-rate increase or a rate decrease, depending on how large that impact fee was.
The impact fee is a commercial fee?
I have seen it from a residential as well as a commercial, as well as industrial. It all depends on how it is structured.
And this raise we're talking about in water is a commercial, residential or across the board?
It's across the board and I will, I will show you that here in a second as well too and how that's all structured out.
So I, I guess my question is, are we raising residential fees for commercial?
Like in years ago, we had this debate. It was the growth and the cost is for the good of the community and, but it was, it was a.
Right.
Either, either way.
Right, it's a crap shoot.
Just so you know, we had an opportunity years ago to maybe not have this be put on everybody and we chose to get the growth.
I, I brought the expert up. Jim, to answer your question, no. As part of these rate studies, they look at the amount of water usage by the, by the industrial side as well as the commercial side and the, and the residential side, and those are adjusted accordingly. So if you were to look at these, we talk about 3.9%, it's not 3.9 exactly for every single category. They, they break it out by the different meters. And during the process of these studies, they look at, again, the residential usage and they look at the industrial usage and kind of weight those. And so, because one of the bad things, as was noted before, is you don't want your residential subsidizing the industrial, but you also don't want industrial subsidizing the residential. So it's a constant, I guess it's a constant battle, but it's a constant weighting.
And I would only add that in the ensuing 20 years, I'd, I'd wanna do some additional research, but I don't wanna go too far down the impact fee or development fee discussion without knowing what the current, because I think there have been some changes in state law that, that, that would affect whether or not you could do that. Anyway.
And, and a lot of the costs that we're seeing here in this cost of service looks at expansion, but a lot of it has to look at day-to-day cost and what those prices are going up to. Our chemical cost, our pipe cost, all those costs in the water department are going astronomical and I wanna say they, they talked a factor of 10 to 20% just of an increase from one month to the next, depending on when you ordered it, and that's kind of why this is all put together. As, as we get further along, if we get major expansion, we'd be more happy to talk about that and, and look to ways to, to offset those costs for everybody. Because the more usage we have, the lower our cost is because we can spread it across a bigger base. Okay, on the wastewater side, page two, keep going. Right there, perfect. So on the wastewater side. All right, this, I, it's a different number, but I, I, we can work off of this one. No, that's actually, I'm sorry, keep going. Keep going. Actually, go, go, that was page six or page seven. I need page two. A little bit further down, there you go. All right, so on the wastewater side, what we're looking at is roughly keeping a, a cash balance of about $3.2 million. Um, as you can see, without an increase, we're doing well. We're looking at about $3.6 million coming down in 2025. Uh, but as you can see, there's some large capital projects that we have coming up that are on the books. If you remember right, a little, about a month ago, you, you guys had a presentation from a gentleman from Donahue talking about the wastewater expansion, had a public hearing, talking about applying for the grant. So one of the things that we try to do is we're continuing to try to take a, a small bite of that apple so that we can do some minor improvements to the plant, so we don't, we can pull those costs off. If I remember right, he was talking about if we did the entire $25 million and put that all to the rate base, you're looking about $18 additional cost per customer per month. So what we're doing here is we're continuing to keep a large cash balance to be able to fund those projects out of cash and not having to bond out for those. The other thing on the wastewater side is our debt ratio. We wanna keep that same 1.45. If you look in the outer years on this chart, and I know the, the slide thing's on there, uh, we're dropping down to 1.2, 1.18 on the 27, 28 timeframe if we don't do any type of rate increases for this, which brings us below what our debt coverage is that we really would like to see. So as, as we've heard, they went through and they ran all the scenarios as well too. And if we go to page seven on that, Sean. So what they're proposing is a 2.9% increase, which keeps our fund balance or cash balance up where it needs to be, but it also improves our debt coverage in addition to the potential bonding that we're looking at doing out in '26. And that's all based on growth as well too. That's to expand the plant from the, the 3.2, which it is right now, 3.2 million gallons per day. We're still working with Eagle to try to upgrade that to 4 million gallons per day. Of course, there's a little bit more red tape when you get into the environmental and state regulatory side of it. So we're going back and forth and it's been going that way for about a year. If they upgrade it to four years, it buys a year or two before, based on expansion of existing plants. Ideally, we wanna go to a 5 million gallon a day. And one of the reasons that I, and I mentioned this to Brian Musselman as well too, is I don't wanna be the reason why a company cannot come here because we don't have the capacity in the plant. So it's not only planning for the capacity today, it's also planning for the capacity in the future, but that'll be a, a future discussion as we talk about plant expansions. So as we look total for both of these, we're looking at 3.9 for water, 2.9 for wastewater. Sean, if you can go up to the, the charts of where we're at with the other utilities.
There's certainly a page.
I don't have a page. I didn't put page numbers. I believe it's in the fronts. It's, it's, it's right after the memo.
So it's one of the.
The, the, all the way to the top, further up there.
Further back?
Nope, further back, I'm sorry. Although, all the way at the beginning of this item number on the agenda.
Probably 14.
It's worth 14C, I think, is the rate survey.
So, so what finance had done is they looked at what our rates are compared to our sister communities around us. As you can see on the water side, the first chart shows you the water without any rate increases and we're in the bottom half of that currently. If you go to the next slide, this is what it is with the proposed rate. And as you can see, we, we move up one tick, but we're still in the bottom half of all the other utilities around us based on the same usage in that, which is roughly 5,000 gallons per day is what we average on a residential customer.
That's also assuming that they don't increase as well.
That's correct. This, this is all based on today's numbers, what they do for their budget. We're just guessing that they're gonna do a no increase, but chances are they're. going to do an increase based on what we're seeing in the industry. The next slide is the wastewater. As you can see, we're about middle of the road on the wastewater side. And with the increase, you'll see the proposed keeps us right about the same area. So if we can actually go to the charts, the proposed rate changes there. On the water side, next one down, the water, right there. There we go. So what we're proposing here is roughly about a $3 increase, we figured, for a residential customer. If you go to the actual billing portions of it, yeah, it just keeps rolling down there. You'll see all the changes. And what you'll see in here is that not everyone changed when it comes to the flat fee that we pay. And that's because of the cost of service. As Tom and I had mentioned, we want to make sure that no one is subsidizing any other rate class. And when they did the cost of service, they based it on the customer charge as well as the usage charge. As you can see, and this will go to what you were talking about, Jim, is on the wastewater side, the customer charges really don't change that much. The only one is that 5/8 inch meter on the water side. But you'll see that the increase is all put into the usage. So those customers that have high usage are going to see a higher increase in their wastewater fees. So some of the industrial customers that are very large water-intensive users are going to see a larger increase because of those usages. And that's the same thing if you look at from a residential side, you're going to see a dollar increase on a 5/8 inch meter and then five, was it 8 cents, 40 cents increase on that. So about $1.44 if you use 5,000 gallons on a residential water user only. So the breakdown has pretty much been set up to be able to show that what we're doing is we're making sure that we're not subsidizing anything and we're only asking for what we really need for the future. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The BPU board, we went through this with a presentation from UFS. It was very well received, and there's a lot of questions answered, asked and answered on both sides. We recommend you approve Resolution 23-34, and I'd be happy to answer any questions to go into effect July 1st.
Questions for Paul? Just one short. We were going to do this anyways before, right? We were already working on this and then inflation hit.
Yes, we had already gone through a cost of service study that went through a three-year rate projection, which ended, would have been in '23. Last year, we changed a little bit on the electric side because of what we were seeing in the power supply cost arena. Right now, we're seeing the same thing on the water wastewater side. So we felt it was time to go ahead and do a revision to the financial projections and the cost of service for both of these. We're actually for all four utilities. On the telecom one, it's be the first one that we've done. So we're going through a little bit more questions and answers on that side. But this is, this would be the end of the year of what was previously looked at, and this is just the financial projections. And we're going to bring these back every year based on what we're seeing in the industry.
Questions for Paul?
Not, they're asking us to adopt Resolution 2334.
Motion to adopt 2334, sorry.
Or? Jeff Scott. We have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, Emily. Motion carried. Thank you, Paul. Your still out memo from Paul regarding public electric vehicle charging rate request. This might be easier.
This might be a little easier to discuss. So a few years back, if you remember, and I believe it was in the late 90s, we put in our first electric vehicle charger on West Chicago as part of a grant. It has since been replaced because of grade and technology and everything. And it is currently a two-port charger, which means you can have two vehicles charging at the same time. They call them level-two chargers, which is about the midpoint. The fast chargers are very expensive. These were more affordable for us to get into the EV market. As things have changed since then, everyone seems to be driving an EV vehicle or all the auto manufacturers are going to EV vehicles. So a few months back, probably about six months ago, we, as part of the Four Corners Park project, we put in another two-port charger over on the southwest corner in the parking lot. We started using that a little bit and as we're starting to see the uptick in the usage from both of these chargers, we felt it was time to start recouping some of those costs that we put out there to install these chargers as well as the energy cost. Through a lot of research, we decided what we were going to do was going to be best. We can either go to a charge per kilowatt hour, different charging rates that different people out there have. So what we ended up looking at was doing it based on hourly charging. So what we're proposing is to charge based on the amount of hours that you are plugged in, that have to get a mobile app through ChargePoint, that they handle all the financial transactions and they send us whatever those number of hours are to help offset those costs. So what we're looking at is charging $2 per hour for the first four hours and $4 an hour for every hour after that. And the reason for the increase is, you know, normally four hours will get you enough. It is kind of like, if you want to think of it as a NASCAR race, a splash and go and the final couple laps because you forgot, that's kind of what these chargers are. We feel that it's going to be a draw for anyone going downtown, be able to park, plug in your vehicle for a couple hours, hang out, go to local shops, have something to eat and a head on. It's not going to be one of these that you're going to be parking your vehicle there if it's at 10% and expect to get up to 90% or 100%, because most of the time, you're never going to get there. Has the reason that everyone normally charges their vehicles at night. In order to make sure that we have turnover, that's why we went ahead and upped it after four hours to say, you know what, if you really wanted to park there all day, guess what? Great, you can park there for the first four hours for $2 an hour. After that, we're going to have to charge you more. And it kind of keeps that cycle going. As people come in, they can charge and then move out. By no means is this for saying that CBPU and the City of Coldwater is going to be the only charging station in the City of Coldwater. No, we're just trying to recoup the cost of a performance, an item that we provided to the citizens of Coldwater. I do know that Coal Ford is in the process of putting one as well, too. Myers is working with a third party to put some charging over there. I know Walmarts have plans to do things in the future. So it is a future coming, it's just a matter of now, we need to recoup our cost before someone decides that, hey, you know what, we want to buy your charging stations and say, hey, great, here's the cost and we recoup everything upfront. But that may be a little far and few between right now, but we are planning for the future on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, because this is a new rate, it would have to go as an ordinance 859, and this, too, would go into effect July 1st.
Questions for Paul?
How much an hour, how much electricity goes through there in that hour?
It all depends on the vehicle and the battery that is charging. So it's really, it's really hard to say the number of kilowatt hours. I know it's not a lot. These fast chargers don't work, or these level-two chargers don't charge as quickly. And I didn't, I forgot that's Bob Granger before he left because he was the one who put a lot of this together, but they don't, they don't charge very quickly normally. The chargers that you'll have in your home, if you buy a Tesla and you put it on the wall, those are level-two chargers. Normally, you pull in, they'll give you 30, 40% charge over an eight to 10-hour period because most of the time, they're trying to charge them overnight.
Paul, I'd use that one downtown, making a stop at the eat or whatever. And I think, I'm going to say five to seven kilowatts probably in an hour.
An hour? You know, what's a kilowatt hour right now?
Yeah. Kilowatt hour right now in a residential is about 11 cents.
Is that with all the transmission fees and taxes and everything?
Yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty much if you take your electric bill divided by your usage, it comes out to be about 11, 12 cents.
And as you know, the BPU is going to let the Myers and the Walmarts, because I think these level-two chargers are going to be dinosaurs eventually. And so we, we've done probably what we're going to do, and then we'll let private industry put in the fast chargers.
Exactly, yes. Definitely because of the difference in cost, a level-two, two-port charger, $6,000 to $7,000. A DC fast charger is about 50.
We have capacity, power for Walmart and Myers in those locations, no problem?
We do. We're working with them as they move forward with everything. And of course, supply chain, we need to know sooner than later if you're planning on doing it so that we know how to size the transformers appropriately.
Okay, any other questions for Paul?
So how many chargers?
We will have a total of, we can charge a total of four vehicles. So each location has the ability to charge two vehicles at a time. So the one on West Chicago and the one on Southwest Corner, Four Corners, will be able to charge two vehicles as well, too.
And the app will tell you if one's busy or the other one's open, and so you will know which one is open. The app will tell you.
So right now, it's free?
Right.
So I've got a chance.
You've got a month and a half to get electric car and get free electricity. Better move fast. Anything else?
Let's charge some vehicles.
They're asking us to introduce ordinance 859.
Reduce, motion to reduce ordinance 859.
Support.
Michael? We have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? A motion carried.
Thank you. If I can add one other thing as well, too. Part of our cost of service study that we're doing on the electric side is looking at different rate structures to offer to residential customers that charge their vehicles at home, be it an off-peak rate or a timely use rate. So we're investigating that as well because we know it's coming. It's just a matter of what that's going to look like, hasn't been determined yet.
We have the technology to do, because a lot of cities now are, you know, recharge at midnight till 6:00 AM, are having a reduced rate. Do we, is our electricity cheaper at 3:00 in the morning?
Historically, yes, it's normally cheaper at those hours. And we do have the infrastructure where we put in our AMI system that allows us to look at the different times that people are using electricity.
That makes sense, okay. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Number 11 is a letter from our missing city attorney regarding the proposed First Amendment to the sales agreement to Schmidt Home. Keith, I imagine you'll take this?
Yep, I'm pinch hitting for the city attorney this evening. So just to recap, this was introduced at the March 27th meeting. We have an existing sales agreement with Schmidt's Home for a proposed expansion. They were looking initially at expanding across the street, across Treat Avenue from their current facility. This amendment, in looking at their plans now, they'd like to occupy the space that is the dead end of Treat Avenue. So this amendment amends what we would sell to them. And because it is currently a public right-of-way, we need to abandon and we need to address a revision to the platted subdivision. So to facilitate that, that requires some additional title and legal work. And the amendment would provide for our sharing of that cost to complete the amendment to the platted subdivision and ultimately then sell them property on which to facilitate a plant expansion. This is, it's set on the table for the required 30 days and it's coming back before you. And so it would be Resolution 2323, which authorizes Agreement 2308.
Jim?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2323 and approve Agreement 2308.
Chad? Thank you, Jim. We have motion and support. Any final questions? This is a roll call vote, so whenever the clerk is ready.
Councilmember Rissman? Aye. Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Knack?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petzko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember House?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. Number 17 is a memo from Susan Heath regarding the Oak Grove Cemetery Ordinance Amendments. Consider adoption of ordinance number 858. Sue?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I came to you two weeks ago about introducing our new cemetery ordinance number 858. And tonight, I'm here to ask you to please consider adopting it. I'm here for questions.
Sue gave a pretty full presentation two weeks ago, I think. But any questions for Sue? If not, our action would be either adopt or not adopt ordinance 858.
Move to adopt.
Random, Travis? We have motion and we have support. All in favor, please say aye. Motion carried. All right, anybody opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Number 18 is a memo from Keith regarding second budget amendment to fiscal year 2223.
Thank you, Your Honor. It has my name on it, but once again, Finance Director Tom Eldridge gets the credit. So this is just the second time during the course of a fiscal year in which we make a budget amendments. And Tom has laid out all of various changes to both the revenue side and the expenditure side, and in general, to the positive for our budget. And I'll turn it over to Tom for any specifics and then any questions that you may have relative to the changes that we're proposing.
I'm your mayor and city council members. So we're going, as Keith mentioned, we did an earlier budget amendment. This is historically, we do, too. So this is our second and final budget amendment. We'll be bringing you, we'll be wrapping up the year and bringing you to 2024 stuff in the next couple of weeks. On the revenue side, really what we're doing is just basically truing things up. We're looking, we talked about when we had our board workshop, the fact that we were getting, we have the marijuana licenses that weren't in the original budget. So we bring them into the general fund because we have received that money. And then we take those same funds and we put them over into Capital Projects Fund that has been discussed. So you've got money coming in, then you have the same amount of money going out. We've talked about the additional building permit revenue that's been coming in this year. A lot of that has to do with the apartments on Willbrook Road. So that's an increase in the budget. We talked about the excess LCSA distribution that relates to loss of personal property tax revenue. Talked about that at the workshop, that is now. We don't know exactly what we're going to receive, but we have a rough estimate, so we've added that to the budget. Charges for services has to do a lot with our recreation program and the fact that we went through a couple of years of essentially COVID and post-COVID time, the recreation department is just about at 100% now compared to where, you know, we're looking back to where we were now in 2019, pre-COVID, so we're at that same level. So we've added that information. And then interest revenue, and I think everybody's aware that interest rates have increased significantly. Some of that is, we see a lot of negatives. We see cost of supplies. One of the reasons Paul was up here was because we see a lot of cost increases because of higher inflation, but we see higher interest as well. We have money invested in the, very conservatively in the market, CDs and treasury instruments. And so we started the year basically saying we were going to get almost nothing. I came to you a couple of months ago, I said, hey, I'm going to bump this up to about $100,000, but it's probably being very conservative. Now, a couple of months later, I'm coming back and saying, yeah, that was conservative, so we're going to increase another $90,000. So, and then we've budgeted accordingly for next year. So we're seeing that being good. On the expense side, to be honest, we don't have too many just one-time specific items. We have a lot of small adjustments that have happened because of wages and benefits. Some are pluses, some are minuses. At the end of the day, we're actually at a minus. So we're actually lowering budgets slightly or lowering our expenditures slightly. A lot of that has to do frankly with the public safety area, please, where we've been understaffed for the entire year. On the capital side, we have got essentially three things since the last times we've looked at this. These are things that you're aware of. We've got the restrooms on Monroe Street, so we're adjusting for those. We've got the resurfacing of the tennis courts, Heritage Park, that's included in here. And also the additional, we added a truck in the DMS fleet a couple of weeks ago. So that is included. And then we've added a little bit into the pension. That was, we pay that out monthly. We have a budget that we work on with MERS. And then this is essentially kind of in addition to that than we've done the last couple of years. So with that, we started the year with a larger deficit, more like $1.6 million because of the capital that we've been talking about. Then when we came to you before, we took that 1.6 down to about 1.2, and now we're at around $800,000, which again, as we've discussed, operational-wise, we're well into the positive. This $800,000 includes the $300,000. dollars includes the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was lent to the DDA. This includes the, um, four hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the fire truck. This includes the money, three hundred and fifty thousand or so spent at the Four Corners Park last year. So, um, it is, I think we talked about roughly about one point four million dollars of essentially capital type projects that don't happen every year. So, so with all those projects, we're still ha- having a healthy fund balance projected for the end of this fiscal year. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Good report, Tom. Any questions for Tom? Kind of had a prelude to this a couple of weeks ago. Um, if not, I think a motion to accept, you want a motion to accept the budget amendments as presented? Keith?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolute.
But moved. Thanks, John.
Support.
Thanks, Chad. We have motion and support to accept the budget amendments as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Tom. Oh, you're still up there. Memo from Tom regarding budget funds.
So we went through in our budget workshop, we talked a lot about the general fund. What we do like to do is kind of give a preview, just to make sure we've touched base on all of the funds that have required budgets. So, uh, funds like, special revenue funds need to have budgets, like major and local streets, parking authority, um, ARPA funds. And then our, our two authorities, the LDFA and the DDA, all these are things that actually have required budgets. Um, so like, as in the past, we have got, put budgets together. I won't go ahead and through any of these specifically unless we have questions. I have them all here. Um, but basically just letting you know, showing you where we were fund balance wise at the end of the last fiscal year. Um, and then essentially kind of opening it up for questions on any specific fund or funds in general.
On the revolving development fund, is that what we funded the road on, um, Michael Drive? And that's what's being replenished then?
That is actually not. That's the Capital Project Fund, and I didn't actually include that up here because it doesn't have a required budget.
Okay.
That is leftover money, um, from, from long, long ago. Uh, when at one time we did have an active, uh, revolving loan fund that was mainly for it's a number of industrial loans that were out there over the years. The money that's in there now really is, uh, a lot of it is interest just earned again in ten, twenty, thirty years ago.
What are the restrictions on you? Is that like from the quality, original quality and?
Yes, yes, I believe it is.
At some point the state was taking control of that.
That's, those are different pots of money.
So this money we do have, for what type of purposes?
This money doesn't have a whole lot of restrictions. I'm looking, Keith, he can, he can pop in and tell me if it does, but the money, Mayor, that you're talking about, uh, was revolving, it sounds similar, but it was revolving loan fund, and we had to give back that money to, it's still out there, but we had to basically take it from local control to state control about eight or nine years ago.
Why is this even? Why isn't it even here? Why isn't it transferred to capital improvements?
We, we probably could. It is available money.
If you have a reason or if you have a
It's not going away. It's, you know.
For you guys to hide more money?
You know.
It's being disclosed, yes.
Okay. So that's, yeah, that's.
Okay, so this is just for information then?
Yep.
And the marijuana money is in the capital improvement fund, which you're not showing?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Questions for Tom on this information item? You're not looking for any action, it's just informative?
Just informative, yes.
Okay.
Because it won't get adopted as part of the overall budget.
Right, right. If there's no questions, thank you.
Okay.
Finally, a letter from Keith regarding setting a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four budget. Keith?
Yep, the easiest action of the night is just scheduling the public, now that you've had, uh, a budget presentation, we, we will have a draft budget, uh, available for review at the next meeting. And, uh, this resolution is setting forth the, um, public hearing for that at the May twenty-second meeting.
They're asking us to adopt resolution twenty-three thirty-five.
So moved.
John? Uh, who, Michael and John?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and support to set a public hearing for our next year's budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Uh, finally, we have a final spot on our agenda for public comments. If anyone would like to address the council, they may do so now. If not, we, yes, sir.
Hi, Joe Guzzi. Um, regards to the white vans picking up the people to work. Um, when they drive in our courtyard, they speed pretty good. I know you guys have regulations about putting signs up. Can we get a sign or even if I gotta buy it, I don't care, to put a sign up in the middle of our courtyard where we have stones and stuff to say, please slow down? I don't know if I can find one in Spanish or not.
There's a lot of kids that ride their bikes around the area. We're just concerned that somebody's going to get hit.
I'm sure, we, we don't engage in questions and answers at the public comment, but after the meeting, I'm sure Keith or
Okay.
uh, Director Scheid will be glad to tell you what's allowed or what's not allowed.
Yeah, I, I was just concerned about, I mean, the home that we're talking about is a three-bedroom home, and I know you were discussing a two-bedroom home with six people. Um, how much is too much for a three-bedroom home? I, they told us they were actually sleeping in the basement, and that's a fire desert code.
Right.
Um, as far as I know, I don't know if the beds have ever been removed from there. Um, like I said, there's no egress window.
I know.
Um, and I, I was just kind of concerned how, how, uh, the inspection works, like how often? You know, and is there a list of people that you guys are supposed, you know, I mean, the realtors, are they supposed to provide a list of people? In case there was a fire, who, how would they know who's in there and?
That's a good question, then I'm sure Office Director Scheid or Keith
We just, we have a lot of issues. I mean, we could go all night. Um, you know, we had issues before down there. And we're just concerned, we've lived there thirty-some years and, um, like I said, my husband had talked to the guy that's kind of in charge of him, and he's willing to mow the lawn. He said he was going to pay him. We've already mowed it two or three times. He said on the tenth of the month, he's going to pay him. But we talked, tried to talk to Mike Thompson, who bought the place, and he said it wasn't his concern. Well, he didn't provide these people with a lawnmower. You know, they don't know how to, you know, we're willing to help them. We've tried to communicate with them, but they don't understand and they weren't supposed to have any vehicles. Now they have two vehicles and it, you know, it's kind of, it came back out of the driveway straight with almost hitting our landscaping and we just have a lot of concerns, but I would be willing to talk to somebody.
We will talk to you after the meeting and see if we can answer some of your questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other public comments at this time? Uh, is there any unfinished business at council level? Any new business at our level? Ain't none? Or adjourned?